I don't have anything from notes from the last meeting that we held, so we defer that. And I've got the agenda on here somewhere. Did Jackie send over a agenda?
Yeah.
I figured she would.
We're just doing the airport camera update for Shane.
Yeah, those guys are putting something up there. It doesn't work.
Yeah, it works. We're trying to get it connected to our network now, which seems to be the biggest challenge we're running into is getting all to the giant with our local network, so.
What's that? The camera?
The camera. Well, the board wanted to have a camera put up just so we can, so if you're, let's say you're in Seattle, you want to fly this wintertime, you don't know if it snowed over here. If it did, it's around where we plowed, you can log into that camera and it gives you a picture within an hour and it lets you know what the conditions are at the airport. Because we've had people fly in here and we haven't had a chance to get up there and plow it yet. I don't know why they'd be flying in a snowstorm, but, and yeah, we had to plug it, so they had to find, you know, go to Cross or someplace else to land.
Would you log in, can't get to this remote? Would you move it or is it stationed?
We can move it, but it's just in the area right now. That's, that was a whole nother, and then the camera, the whole thing.
Those are pretty expensive.
Yeah, the panning ones are, they're pretty spending, so it's fixed, but it's got a pretty wide angle on it, you can see the windsock and you can see kind of the west end of the runway. And so that was kind of the capture, was to kind of hit that. So if you go on, once you get hooked to our network, the idea is that you go on our website, go to Public Works, you go to Airport, go to AWOS, and you'll have a link there you click on and I'll show you the picture for the camera.
You have to go to.
It's not hooked up yet, so don't worry about it, but we'll, we'll get all the information you guys once it's operational.
So, real quick, while we're on the Ken thing, Justin from, anyway, he says, "It can be sunny out." He says, "That train's just ran to Sunnyside and it's fogged in." And he said, "It's Dwayne's Indian." There's a couple things.
You mean it's soaking it, you think?
Soaking it, and then I've sat there and watched it, you know, got the first windsock, and then you guys put the new one on me, and then it blew it inside itself again, and.
So it's inside out sock?
It's back to normal now.
Okay. You're trying to wait for the wind to blow the other direction.
Is that the one that's on the small hangar?
No, it's right out.
The one in the corner?
And on the north side. That Indian's horrible, that thing.
Fogs? That's a good point. I'll have to, want to walk through a dress.
I seen about getting a couple five hundred, uh, five gallon metal cans, put them together and make like a tube, and I got an old rudder, I can put on the end of that and get a, make a turntable out there for you.
Right.
And it went and pointed certain directions.
On the pillar ends.
That, that pole, that pole, where that holds the flag, there used to be something there at one time on that pole, so it would rotate, or they had all the bricks around that.
Okay, well, we're on the camera, and then, and then casually run over to the windsock there a little bit, but we'll finish up here and get started. Uh, that windsock that's down by two forty-one, uh, that kind of needs to be moved because if we would have an accident on the runway and Red had to land, he'd have to land on the, on the taxiway, and that, that windsock right, right there in the middle of the taxiway, it just needs to be moved over a little bit.
One of the taxiways.
Okay, somebody wants, somebody asked to land, and something's on the runway.
Okay.
Uh, we just need to.
Well, give me some ideas of where you think the best way to put it is.
Well, Shane, can you hear me, Stephanie?
Hold on, yeah, go ahead, Steph.
Hey, on the windsock location, um, we, oh, that would, it can be moved, but it needs to be put in for, per FAA location.
Of course.
It can't just go anywhere. It needs to be in, there's a pretty preset, um, locations on where those need to go.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks for answering.
Do we have to have three windsocks in this field?
I'm sorry, there's some rough ones. Do we have to have what? Three?
Three windsocks. Do we have to have three windsocks, or there's one and enough?
Generally, yes. Yeah, generally you do. Um, I can pull that standard up, though. I, I at least know that you're required to have two, for sure. So let me verify that third one.
Okay. One at each end, that's what I was thinking. Hey, Ted. Okay, well, thanks for that, Stephanie. Can you hear us okay there?
Yeah, I can. Can you, I hope you can do the same for me.
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you. We just, sometimes we all get, I know you get a lot of feedback on your end, so.
Oh, no, I'm following good. So far, so good. So I will, Shane, I'll add it, to do this one for me is to verify the number and location of windsocks out there.
Perfect.
Okay, uh, thank you, everybody. Any more discussion on the camera?
I've got, no, that's all I got to report.
Okay, and then we'll find out next meeting how to get into.
Right. And then, so, right, so we'll turn it over to David now, if that's.
Yep, yep.
All right.
David, can you figure out how to plug in your projector?
Well, that's, oh, now, yeah, I just need to know which cord to plug in. This last time they pulled one out and stuck it in the works. Just got done feeding, just got done feeding cows. Yeah, I don't think it got me on me.
You need to go feed mine, now that you're done with yours.
Yeah. I didn't send out any texts. I, you forgot.
I forgot. I'm over seventy.
Well, I forgot to text.
No problem. I'll get you next time.
Yeah.
Yeah, can you hear that smoothie? Do you want me to hear that over here by you?
No, we're pretty through. David's got the rest of it.
David, I thought he was David Bell. He changed his name.
Yeah, I told him, hey, that we, you need, when I measured that, and there was nothing left in the line, out, couldn't, the other one exists, really mine, it's, it's still, right, it's been a while since I was feeling that. I told him about twenty twelve, and just putting four hundred feet more.
Thank you.
Yeah, they don't have to lighten it. All they have to do is extend it around.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask you guys, that really, that pays a million dollars?
Yeah, every bit of that. Wow, maybe more.
All right, well, thank you. Are you ready to roll there?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, you guys, if you want to interrupt your regular business meeting, so, uh, thanks for taking your time for that.
Generally, yes. Yeah, generally you do. Um, I can pull that standard up, though. I, I at least know that you're required to have two, for sure. So let me verify that third one.
Okay. One at each end, that's what I was thinking. Hey, Ted. Okay, well, thanks for that, Stephanie. Can you hear us okay there?
Yeah, I can. Can you, I hope you can do the same for me.
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you. We just, sometimes we all get, I know you get a lot of feedback on your end, so.
Oh, no, I'm following good. So far, so good. So I will, Shane, I'll add it, to do this one for me is to verify the number and location of windsocks out there.
Perfect.
Okay, uh, thank you, everybody. Any more discussion on the camera?
I've got, no, that's all I got to report.
Okay, and then we'll find out next meeting how to get into.
Right. And then, so, right, so we'll turn it over to David now, if that's.
Yep, yep.
All right.
David, can you figure out how to plug in your projector?
Well, that's what I was trying to figure. Oh, now, yeah, I just need to know which cord to plug in. This last time they pulled one out and stuck it in the works. Just got done feeding, just got done feeding cows. Yeah, I don't think it got me on me.
You need to go feed mine, now that you're done with yours.
Yeah.
I didn't send out any texts. I, you forgot.
I forgot. I'm over seventy.
Well, I forgot to text.
No problem. I'll get you next time.
Yeah, can you hear that smoothie?
Do you want me to hear that over here by you?
No, we're pretty through. David's got the rest of it. David, I thought he was David Phil. He changed his name.
Yeah, I told him, hey, that we, you need, when I measured that, and there was nothing left in the line, out, good. The other one is just refueling line, it's, it's still, right, speed of wings. And told him about twenty twelve. And just putting four hundred feet more.
Yeah.
Stretch down again.
You like my plane, huh?
I was gonna ask you guys, that really, that's worth a million dollars?
Yeah, every bit of that. Wow, about a million more.
All right, well, thank you. Are you ready to roll there?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, you guys, if you want to interrupt your regular business meeting, so, uh, thanks for taking time for that airport layout plan discussion. Um, so, later, for anybody who wants to see things in real form, uh, we put together some landside concepts on a board. I've got them on the screen here, but I'll leave them, and basically they're similar. Um, so, uh, thanks, this is the working session we added to our primary advisory committee meeting, uh, schedule. Uh, and I think from the last advisory committee meeting, we discussed a lot of development items and focused on the airside pieces, the runway taxi lanes. And tonight, we'll recap that a little bit, but then, um, we'll, um, zero in on the land side. So, let me see here, this would help if I got the right one. This is my, that works. I just got to figure out how to advance the slide.
Pigeons. They're roosting up, up between the few roof lines. About two weeks after the building was, was, was done.
Go ahead, hold me out.
Now, the white remote up there was the, for the overhead.
Yeah.
That one doesn't work for the slides?
All right, I know. I do a lot of walking back and forth. So, okay, so again, I'd like to, and what's, give me an idea of the time, when you guys want to adjourn, what time? Cut off, seven, six thirty? Uh, we don't really have a cutoff, but yeah, we don't want, if anybody's nodding off, yeah, we'll kind of call it. Okay, so we'll try to keep it short and get to, what I want to hear is, I want some feedback on the ideas, and then, so, we'll, uh, we're not going to go back tonight and go through all, but I want to hear runway options that we had through last time. But I would like to get some feedback on some preferences on those. I've got some feedback from Shane, and ultimately, it's the city's decision on which option to identify as the preferred input of this group, obviously. Um, tonight, the new material is the land side, so basically think aprons, taxi lanes, hangers, fueling facilities, that kind of thing. Um, and then, we'll talk about the next steps after that. So, any questions on the, on the front part? Okay. So just, this is going to be a little tricky because I've got pictures and I've got words, but they're not on the same slide, so it's going to be a little back and forth. So, we came up with kind of three landside alternatives. We conveniently labeled them one through three, and we've got our orientation on three, and that's three A. So, essentially, they all, either individually or in combination, are intended to accommodate the same things. And this group of primary needs that we're listing here, these are the things that we wanted to make sure we accomplished, or that we do accomplish in some way when we put together all these pictures of these components, uh, and, and tell me, obviously, if we've got something wrong. But the first one there is, we, the priority that we wanted to ensure, no matter which option is chosen, is that we maintain aircraft access to all existing hangers and the existing fuel area. So that is on the main apron. That doesn't mean it would necessarily be the same configuration of access that we have today, but in the options that we worked out, all of those facilities have access, so nothing is cut off. I think that's essential. Uh, second one is, just in general, we're talking primarily transits at some base, we need parking areas for small aircraft, kind of the aircraft tie-downs. We need parking for larger fixed wing aircraft, think of the Pilatus or the King Air to drive through aircraft, and we feel like we need to just be a parking area for helicopters, transits primarily, think of again, medevac. Now, the, the medevac parking can be a combination. It could be helicopter and fixed wing, it's just a fantastic figure. Um, we talked a lot about design standards last time. On the landside piece, the main design standard that we need to hit is the object free area for any taxi lanes or taxi waves that service these apron areas, or any new aprons. That's simply a, an FAA measure from the center line of any taxi route to the wingtip clearance. So we've got Design Group One, small, you know, small single-engine airplanes and light twins, um, basically with the design standard that was used previously on the airfield. And then, uh, the smaller plane tie-down east apron is configured on that, on that same scale, and in fact, the, the taxi waves and the clearances on the main apron or Design Group One, uh, at least, I mean, the approximate clearances were based on that. Uh, with the addition of the Design Group Two aircraft, and some areas, we have a need to protect the larger areas, so the larger aircraft need more clearance. So all of the layouts that you'll see tonight, the different alternatives, they all are set up to meet FAA standards. Now, there's options down the road where corners may be cut in construction or something potentially, but what we're presenting is something the FAA can review and say, yes, if these are standard. Uh, and that's essential because it will be depicted on the airport layout plan, and that opens the door to FAA funding. Without that, the city is pretty much on, not a good place to be financially. Um, so, near-term demand, we want to make sure we provide opportunities for hangar sites, including UAV hangars that's been preliminarily cited, uh, not necessarily finalized, but we've accounted for that based on the time period provided. But we also want to make sure that we have long-term opportunities for new hangar development, uh, with potential addition of a new fueling facility and FDO facilities. These are things that, um, there's no particular timeline, it's really market-driven, but we want to make sure that we sort of account for those when we're laying out new facilities. And then, uh, last one there is just simply a reference to the fact that when we locate new hangers, say, everything that we're proposing is along the south flight line of the airfields, meaning parallel to the runway and parallel taxiway. Uh, with the airspace requirements that we need, we have a building restriction line, a setback line that would be needed to clear a certain type of building. So the example is to clear an eight, a roof peak of an eighteen foot high hangar, which isn't a very thick hangar, but it's a medium-sized hangar. We need to locate that building no closer than three hundred seventy-six feet from the runway center. And for reference, a lot of the hangers, um, bigger hangers on the flight line are set back there. A couple of the T-hangers are forward to that, so when we set new hangers, we want to make sure that we don't create any airspace protection.
Now, you said eighteen foot peak, is that the peak, or is it the eve of the hangar?
Typically, we think of the peak.
Oh, did it?
Now, if you're trying to hang them the other way, the peak's going to be in the middle of the roof, but, but, uh, yeah, it's just a reference, and that doesn't mean, strictly speaking, that you couldn't put a building closer if it was lower. If you have a low-profile off-the-T hangar, low-profile rough, maybe a fifteen foot, fifteen foot peak, you could potentially locate that closer.
Sure.
The goal is to avoid pumping through the, uh, transition surface. It's not interesting, though, it's, I looked back today at the airport layout plan, the most recent update, and one that we did in, in oh nine, and the current building restriction line that's shown on there is actually three hundred seventy feet from the runway center line. And I remember we looked at that in anticipation of a designer to upgrade at some point. So really, and that was, for some reason, I can't honestly remember why, but for some reason, we, we chose seventeen feet, so that's a number. So, it's just a reference. So these, everything essentially accomplishes this, either individually or in combination. So these are the things that we want, we're going to strive for. With that, we can kind of look at some pictures. Center line of the runway. And the way that works is, the first part of that definition is the, the primary surface for the runway is a part seventy-seven airspace for this runway, larger than utility visual, that's five hundred feet wide. So two hundred fifty feet off center line is the edge of the primary surface. So if you're standing, looking down the runway center line, it's flat, right? You get out to the edge of the primary surface, and then the cycle's go seven to one. So think of it like a football stadium.
So, are you saying you have to look in larger runway?
No, no, it's got nothing to do with the runway. Talking about how close can you build new buildings along the flight line, so the runway doesn't have to move. Um, so this is, um, okay, this is landside alternative one. And when we started looking at the layouts for the options, we kind of gravitated on, we wanted to, we knew, from what we talked about last time, we knew that we had some issues with design standard compliance on the main apron and on the east apron. So the taxi lane clearances on both those didn't meet the FAA standards for, for obstruction. So we knew that in reconfiguring those, we had to sort of solve that. So what we did here, and this is direct feedback that we got from, from this group last time, it was like, well, you know, we were thinking about Design Group Two, larger aircraft on the main apron. This option actually flips that script, and it keeps the, uh, main apron focused on Design Group One. So what we've got here, as you see the blue lines, would represent the new taxi lanes. Um, in this option, we've got, again, kind of like you've got now, you've got this long taxi lane route that runs from basically A two to A three. This one has a shorter parallel section that ties into Alpha, Alpha and their.
Why do you need all those lines going to the normal aircraft taxiway, uh, for people with taxis?
Well, it's kind of like, the reason you put stripes on the highway, you want people to stay in their lane if they can, because in some cases, you don't want to run into something like a building or a parked aircraft in the dark, for example. So pilots that aren't familiar with the rough airfield might come in at night looking for fuel or something, taxi around. If there's no striping, they're going to get lost in the dark, right? That doesn't mean if you've got their path, somebody's not going to just jump over the taxiway.
The line you got right now on the run, on the taxiway, the center line of the taxiway, and that one right there.
Yeah.
How much distance do you need from the center line of that line, uh, air, uh, taxiway clearance from the center line to the right, to the north and south?
So it depends what you're talking about. You want it object-free area cleared?
What is clearance from center line to the left or right?
Well, the taxiway object-free area for Alpha, it requires sixty-two feet from the center line of the taxiway down.
Okay.
That doesn't mean you can run a parallel taxiway in there, but that's where you can park an aircraft.
Sixty-two feet.
Yeah, notice this right here, this box?
Yeah.
And that light blue line right there? That's, uh, that's essentially the setback that we need for that.
Okay, right now, where you got your regular taxiway to go, you say sixty feet. Oh, from that line right now, to where the tie-downs are for the airplane that we have with three in front of the, uh, my hangar, right, my hangar. You know, that's already eighty feet?
Well, yeah, clear of the taxi, so those tie-downs are, are outside of the protected area for Alpha. That's what you're saying, that's right.
Yeah.
But they're not outside of the protected area through here, so what we're trying to do.
Well, that line, that's when they put that new line in, there coming from, that, from that area there, from that exit way there, where you got the ones dropping down, they put that yellow line originally in for all the clearance of the buildings and hangers.
I get it, I get it. I'm just saying what we're showing here meets current FAA standards.
Yeah, but then we, then we, when we redid the runway, didn't we do FAA clearance at that time?
Yeah, I think that's right, but we've also had.
Why do we have to change it?
Well, there's been changes in the design standards since that project was done, too. But keep in mind also that we're talking about, uh, now, I would say that there were standards that were applied, but, uh, what we, what was not necessarily accomplished with that was that those three tie-downs that are parked there, uh, aren't necessarily clear of the adjacent taxi lane. So what we're, well, no, let me just finish this. So on this route, for example, this pathway through here, that lower, the orange line that runs there, okay? That's the Design Group One object-free area needed for that taxi lane. That's a small airplane clearance, so that's a standard. So you can see, well, the reason we locate this proposed taxi lane line where it is, is because that allows us to clear the fuel tank and the fence, right? So when an aircraft comes in parallel to line up to fuel, if they're, um, you know, if we have a taxi route through there, that's what we, that's the location we need to sort of bypass there. And we have a similar issue, so you can see vertically how much clearance there is here. Well, you can see that, that distance roughly up toward those tie-downs, we don't have enough room.
Well, I, you know.
Yeah, so that's what we're trying to accomplish here. So the takeaways on this one is, we, uh, keep, uh, aircraft access to the existing fueling area, one, and once they hit this block, they can dive in and get close to the pumps, that's not an issue. Uh, we lose the tie-downs out here because we cannot clear them on this taxi lane. We think potentially we could salvage a couple of tie-downs on this west end in.
Now, that would be in a way of, uh, Red's.
Well, we need to find out from Red if he's using this taxiway or going to come this way, or both, and if it's both.
He's, he's going, a lot of times, he's going forward out, out to the record taxiway. Yeah, he goes, he goes out to a taxiway and goes down.
Red, you're here. Uh, so are these in the, are this going to affect your operation if they're there?
I come in and I get pulled up, headed east and then, or west, and then I pull out.
Okay, so those are no goes. Okay, that's fine. So, do they make a group one airplane?
Yeah, four twenty.
Uh, it's, yeah, four twenty one's closed. There's some King Airs that are group ones. It's, uh, up to four twenty to be getting higher a little bit.
King Air wouldn't be getting.
Right, 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 yeah, yeah. And that, I mean, you know, if you got a decent three that came in, a meter skill, you just basically push them in there and get through. But what we're talking about is just design for that.
What is the distance FAA requires from the taxi line to the, uh,哪儿?
Specific removal object.
Yeah.
The obstruction?
Yeah.
Yeah, in, uh, for a taxi lane is a taxi lane.
For, for class one, yeah.
Taxi lane, not a parallel taxi lane.
Right.
Taxi lane, it's thirty-nine and a half.
Thirty-nine and a half, okay, thank you.
About forty feet. So the clearance what we need along maybe defined taxi route, if you think about it, is we need eighty feet, seventy-nine feet.
Okay.
Thirty-nine and a half on each side. Ideally, when you build T-hangers for Design Group One aircraft, you got eighty feet between the rows, and everybody's happy, and.
All right, I, I have one question while I'm getting this, uh, thirty feet or whatever. All right. If I can get my finances, on my hangar right there, out to where the blacktop is, no, no, not forward, to the left. This, uh, you see where you got the boot taxi, the, between Ted's hangar and my hangar? Okay, you go a little bit to the left right there. I have, I have seventy feet from that blacktop.
Yeah.
To my hangar. And I'm planning on, if I get money, to build a couple of hangers there, or one, one large hangar.
Okay.
And that'll get me close to eighty feet from Ted's hangar to, or seventy-nine feet, let's say, seventy-nine feet, which is required from Ted's hangar to my hangar, so I can tie it in there, so I have that seventy-nine feet.
Right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, this separation, what we're trying for here is to, to, and this goes back to the idea that we wanted to preserve all of the access to existing hangers. Your expansion is kind of in the same boat, because this corner right here to this building that made that merger of office, that, that's about seventy-nine feet deep. So, uh, yeah, you'd be okay. If you wanted to put a bigger airplane in there, you could do that, but.
Well, I'm not only thinking of, of forty or forty-foot doors, just like what Ted has.
Yep.
And, uh, one entrance going north with a fifty-foot door.
Yeah. Those would be fine if you're fitting inside there, that's not an issue, but you've got.
I'll be seventy, seventy-nine feet away from Ted's, face of his hangar there, to, to the new ones.
Good. That's not a problem, as I can see. The orange lines that are depicted here, for example, uh, are the setbacks needed to protect the taxi lanes. Now, one thing I would just mention to you is, when you're looking at expanding your hangar, you're going to have to go through the FAA process.
Yeah.
And make sure that the height is not.
Yeah, it's already, it's not going to be high.
Yeah, that, I think that'll help a lot. So, that's. So that's the main idea here is that these, one is that we, we preserve the access to the fueling area to these existing hangers. We've got an infill opportunity here between Red's hangar and the constant hangar next. Uh, not really enough through there for the T-hanger, but these are just fairly typical, uh, conventional hangers. Could be one rectangular, there's nothing particularly mentioned about that. Uh, but there's definitely an opportunity for some infill development there. I don't believe this ground is leased. We try to stay clear of the gravel defined areas that look like they probably mean the edges of the adjacent leases. Uh, so that's a, that's pretty, pretty accessible near term. Uh, this double taxi lane, we probably wouldn't build it that way, I think, because we'd probably want with a little pavement in the middle to share, you don't need two driveways unless there's some cost issue or tenement.
So what is the east-west wide width of these buildings here?
Uh, I'd have to guess, they're about fifty, forty to fifty wide, that's what they typically be, I can give an exact.
So a hundred feet is in there?
Yeah, it's about that. I'd have to double check, uh, it gets, typically, these boxes are in the forty, fifty square range, you know, they can vary depending on the hangar design. But you'd be looking at a hangar, you know, potentially a forty-foot door, maybe as much as a- If you wanted a bigger one, you could go with a bigger building with a, say, eighty-foot door, just drop it straight out, have the length, kind of like what Red's got. And how big is your building, Red, across the front, is that about eighty? Okay, so that gives you some scale, so, okay. I think fifty, probably in the high side, so we can tighten that up with some dimensions. Question really is, you know, for the, for the city and for you guys, does this make sense? I mean, the hangar in this location, it's not a hangar, what else? The old plan kind of had this area outlined as maybe potential apron expansion, but with Red's hangar and the Felton in place, was really no point in putting an apron down here? We were going to do that, uh, didn't ever get put, well, but she and I, uh, listening from, uh, for, it was her name, Jay, hey, hey, yeah, this is, Jay, she, there for-
Hey, you thought you were re-instructed.
Yeah, but there was something, remember that shame, we couldn't go across that driveway or-
Yeah, that was, it was part of the through the fence type deal where this, because the parcel and sub will obviously-
Right here.
Yeah, and then be able to cross over into the runway or into the, into the doorway-
They, they have some negotiated access through here?
Well, we'd have to create that, we'd have to-
Right now, they just do it?
Because having a plane cross through a city street, which is airport way, um-
Where would the plane cross the street?
It would cross this way, going, going north to get over to the runway.
From here to there?
Yes.
But that's not a street, right?
No, no.
I mean, what, what, I don't, I'm not tracking, what, what's the issue with an aircraft?
So we build an anchor down there in the street?
Oh, in here, here? Oh, I see, I see.
Right, that was the, that was, that was the original proposed location for the UAS hangar.
Oh, I got you, okay, okay.
So, they do have a control?
Okay, yeah, I, I've seen it done, it's just not conventional, but it's very good for me, it's planned on roads.
Yeah, we kind of got talked out of it.
Yeah, well, that's a good point.
By the FAA, yeah.
I mean, this is a classic reason why the FAA wants-
The golden rule.
Aeronautical, non-aeronautical, they just set a date. They don't want aeronautical land uses across a road where they have to do that, and they don't want non-aeronautical feeding up to the flight line, which is in your control supply. So, okay, so this, again, this focus of this is all design group one centric, okay? You still got the Pilatuses and other aircraft to deal with, so you have to solve that with this. That doesn't solve that problem. But as we move over this way, uh, and I know this isn't popular, but these, these two redirects are intended to satisfy the FAA. This eliminates the direct access onto A two and A one, A two, A three from the apron, so some, some pre-jiggered sort of route in there. Uh, but, you know, again, it meets standards. Um, now, over here, the east-
That can be made, your tie downs like there.
Say again?
You can, you can use that, where you got the blue lines, you can have tie downs on both sides.
Right here?
No, where you got the airplane already there.
Right there.
Yeah.
Those are tie downs, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's just get to that.
And you can do-
East apron. So we've got eighteen, eighteen-
Leave that for our tie down.
Yes, well, leave it, but it's going to need to be reconstructed. Stephanie can sway in on this because the pavement is pretty worn out.
No kidding.
But it's also going to have to, because it's going to use that pavement, it's going to have to be redesigned to meet standards. Translation is, you've got sixteen tie downs out there, two have gone away, and I'm not sure why, in the southeast corner over here. I don't know why those are not there, but, now, what we did was, we looked at the clearances on the taxi lane, uh, which is right through the middle here. This is existing routed, right? This comes in, this one is existing, and this is existing, still let up at the east end there. Um, what we found, and we touched on this, I think, at the last meeting, and this airplane actually illustrates this. So this airplane right there is in a tie down, one of the marked tie downs on the north road. The top of the tie, right, the beginning tie down T is sitting right on the taxi way object per area line for the Alpha, right? That means that the anchors are right on the ditch there. That means that the airplane anchored in there is hanging out over the edge, about four feet plus, hanging into the OFA for Alpha. So that, that's a-
Uh, question.
Yeah.
The original taxi way, not parking taxi way.
Up here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you measure from that line to that airplane?
No.
You only need sixty feet.
Yeah, but we're not-
That's, that's over eighty feet.
Well, I can tell you that the line, the blue line here, right, measured from the center line of the current taxi lane, or taxi way, not the old one, but the one that's actually there and used.
And the one you're using now that they put in, that's over eighty feet. So if that guy pulls out and go, and just drives up to the river taxi way, because everybody's going, it's going to go down that way there, they're going to be on the river taxi way.
Yeah, all, all of-
And that, and that's, that covers your clearance of sixty feet.
Well, what, well, let me explain it this way. What's depicted on there with those blue tie down markings, right, and the ones behind here? Those locations, um, those, those are the locations that we would need to have an airplane like this one parked in it and not be in the object per area for the taxi way.
Right now, that airplane right there is not in the way of the taxi line that we have, not.
Well, I just, I would disagree because-
Did you go out and measure it?
Well, yes, actually.
So did we.
Well, look, the, what we're-
That's over eighty feet.
What we're measuring is the distance from the center line of taxiway A-
Yeah.
Down to here, that's sixty-two feet roughly.
Sixty-two?
And, and that is, yeah, I'm trying to remember, but basically, the, the, the tie downs, and they're barely visible there in the photo, but the tie downs are sitting right on that line. So when they were installed many, many years ago, it was not uncommon to have measurements done that way, right? And the FAA didn't even acknowledge that for a long time. The current design standards say, oh, yeah, I guess we're going to need some room in front of the airplane, tie down. So these tie downs with the offsets factor that in. So all of the, the spinner of the airplane in the north-facing road would sit just, just shy of that blue line. So that would make-
Yeah, so you don't, you don't need a blue line.
Actually, we do, we do. That's the one the FAA cares about.
Why, why can't that guy just go straight up to the taxi way?
Oh, he can't, he can't. I'm not saying he can't, but the FAA measurement is, they want a, the specific clearance from the center line of the parallel taxi way. That's what that blue line is.
Why, then, then you're having two taxi ways-
No.
When you don't need them.
Well, no, I don't understand that, because this is your taxi way right here. That's true.
Okay, is, are you saying where the taxi way is in front of my hangar is, uh, is, no, that's a taxi lane?
Yeah. Different standard set, plus design group one, not design group two. So, yeah, this is-
You said you only need sixty feet, so if he's sixty feet, he's out of the taxi-
Well, all I can tell you is that we've measured this, and these tie downs, when they're occupied, the airplanes are penetrating that other thing. That's just, that's the way it is.
You only need sixty feet?
Well, you see, it's a tie down.
Yeah.
See, I'm letting you see, the airplane- The tie downs, the tie downs themselves aren't the problem, it's when they have an airplane in them, and that becomes an obstacle. So, I, yeah, you know, most people would say it, and say, well, I'm not going to run into that plane as much.
It's like when you park your pickup in a spot that's marked, uh-
Top pack, correct.
Top pack car.
Yeah, because the hang, the, the tail hangs out back, right? So, anyway, so, I just want to make, just background. So what we're able to do is satisfy all the FAA design standards for both the offset on Alpha, the clearances on the internal. Uh, same issue on here, we've got, we run off the south edge of the apron, so we've shown that, uh, we've got some room for the fence. We've shown this, this orange area is all basically new pavement, potentially. There's a potential that you could shift the tails of these tie downs off, I've seen tie downs where the tail anchor is off the pavement, airplane hangs its tail out over the gravel, that can be done temporarily, but the way this is drawn, we basically assume that this would be new pavement and a new, um, you know, section added here. The times to do this, obviously, would be when the apron pavement is being reconstructed because of the condition of pavement. Now, back to the design group two guys, the Pilatus types, that's where these drive-through positions are. Those are sized, those are scaled to a Pilatus PC-12. So these guys are design group two drive-through positions. Again, they're clear of this taxi way OFA, that's important. We need a new entry taxi lane to get in here, and then they can tie into this one on the way out. But because this taxi lane to the east of East Apron was designed for designer one aircraft, we need to widen on this side as well a little bit. And we also have that, uh, that turns this one into a design group two taxi lane opening. So we need to increase the clearance this way to allow aircraft to come through without obstructing. Now, what I like about this concept is we're able to salvage all of the existing taxi lanes that serve the east apron. It also works to support a future taxi way down to the proposed UAB or UAS hangar, which right now, the plan, the site plan I saw basically staked out this area down here. So what we've conceptually shown is with this layout, you, you solve your large aircraft park, this is where you transient, medevac aircraft would go, here. Uh, we need access to that, obviously, so there's vehicle access coming in. Um, this could double as a transit helicopter parking area, uh, getting heavily medevac-centric. Um, and we get some various sized conventional hangers through here by, with this taxi lane. So depending on, you know, what comes first, you know, I could imagine it's possible that the UAB hangar can be built and operated without a taxi. I mean, it depends on the kind of aircraft they're, if they're dealing with the handheld guides or the ones that throw in the air, they may not need a taxi lane, but ideally, you'd have access there. My thinking is, I don't know where the UAS or UAV market's going to go, or are any part of that, but in my mind, from an airport planning perspective, if you have taxi lane access back through here, it really doesn't matter. And that building eventually could be converted into aircraft storage, conventional aircraft, right? There's no reason that couldn't be a, as a baron or something in there, so, let's, let's plan a little bathroom for that. Not in this, I've got one that does, but this, so far, we're kind of inching our way in this way. So right now, we've assumed that the bathroom, which I think is right here, right?
Yeah.
Is, uh, is, and same with the fuel, I mean, to this point, we're kind of keeping those services there. But that's a really good point, in that, you know, with your transients coming in here, we've got to walk, and I guess they do now, unless they park here to go and use it and then go park, but, but, uh, yeah, I think, but, you know, this is vehicle access with vehicle parking, I think a restroom facility or something could easily come to that. Uh, but that, so, again, just to recap this one, uh, we, we keep the design group one activity over here, we push, and here, we push the design group two activity out over here. That eliminates the conflict in here with the Pilatus parking out here, probably King Airs or whatever, or whatever, or events and others. Um, so, uh, yeah.
One quick, yes, was, was there any thought given to where FBO might come in for this down and all?
Yeah, yeah, but it's, yeah, but it's, it's actually part of another alternative. So, uh, we're kind of incrementally working over that way.
Sorry?
I'll give you a spoiler, yeah, it's, it's east of East Apron.
Okay.
So that's kind of the new center of that, where you're kind of oriented. So to recap this one, this is kind of like, I can test your memory in the photo. So this one, basically, like I said, it's designer point access, preserve, preserved to the fuel area and the hangers, off the valve, but we get, we're going to scratch, I think we're going to scratch women and tie downs because the two tie downs that we squeeze over by ropes probably are in the way. We've got the infill hangar development, uh, east apron, again, we can get ten tie downs. So we lose, we've got sixteen out there now that have anchors, but we, we essentially can get ten because of the additional clearances we need. Um, and then we have two transient, uh, parking positions for the designer two aircraft, got a long-term development area for hangers, access vehicles and developments there. That's where your kind of FBO thing goes. Uh, I'm going to show you the next version. So this is alternative two. Now, again, we're, we're accomplishing some of the same things in different ways. This one is, it's still, now, again, we'll scratch these guys, this is the same, fueling area is basically the same, although instead of having one long taxi way through here, taxi lane, we break this up, so it's more of a horseshoe. And that allows the designer point aircraft to come in and fuel, we've got kind of a preliminary, like a primary fueling and a waiting kind of, you know, staging kind of lineup there. Um, and we get in and out, again, clean. This is, this was kind of the stage we're trying to figure out what to do with, because we can't, we know we can't run a taxi lane through the apron and still meet lateral clearances for tie downs. So rather than do that, we just basically created what I'd call a hot box. And the idea with this would be, if it does qualify as a taxi lane, parallel taxi lane, because they come in at kind of a fishhook angle, um, the idea here would be, it'd be like the hot zone for medevac loading and unloading patient transport. And if there's one airplane or, you know, there's, obviously, if you put an airplane over here, you're going to block the path, but if it was dedicated for medevac use rather than running the general transient aircraft, then I think it could function. And it'd be marked appropriately, but essentially, it's just, the inside of the box is clear of the adjacent taxi lanes, both sides of, of our building here, and it's also clear of the parallel taxi way. Everything else over here is about the same. The, this one, we did a little bit of a different spin on East Apron, because, again, we, we don't have that dedicated transient designer two space, and we didn't go over here. Option, alternative one, we came in over here. This option, we're consolidating everything west of the existing taxi lane. Trade-off with that is, we lose a lot of smaller plane tie downs, we end up with four, and then we get two drive-through positions. So, um, the simple way to think about that, this part is basically all the same. So, uh, you either load it up with smaller plane tie downs on, and build more apron here for your drive-throughs, or you split the difference, you split it between small tie downs and drive-throughs. That's, this is the main difference in, in this, of course. This is the main difference on, between alternative one, alternative two. So I know that four tie downs is not a lot, but as a, as a longer-term development step, there can be additional tie downs in April build over here, but this would be kind of an interim step.
Who owns that property to the east?
This is airport property.
It is airport property.
Yeah.
A city project.
Right, so, right. So any thoughts about any of that?
Here's one other little thing, but I know something that'll help, not much, Shane, but some. This green area down here, we talked about earlier, getting to cross that road, if they terminate City Road at some point, we can still run a taxi way-
Oh, yeah.
Over here somewhere.
Yeah.
I see. You could, uh, because you can, you can always vacate a right of ways, and, uh, there's ways to do that.
If you have your seventy feet, or eighty feet, you know, three eighty's thingers, you go from there, oh.
Trust me, Bob, there's ways to do all of that stuff.
You need to go-
Okay.
You need to help them?
There's some way over.
You need to go between them, Bob?
No, you don't have to do anything in sort. All you have to do is sit down with a gate measure, and right now, there's nothing built there. So there's all kinds of, there's all kinds of options.
Yeah, and that's a good point. I think we have not heard from anyone who reported a kid in a plan or from Shane or anybody that downtown for a plan to develop this. Well, I did go back and look at the plan we did in 2009, and we did have an alternative at one point to develop this. And, um, we did access, you know, kind of like I'm describing, provide a taxi lane across, probably involved terminating the road down here somewhere. It was very close to the end, if I recall, but it, it didn't make the cut back then.
If you, uh, you know, if you flash your line across the north side of that green area, what do you do with the underground fire, uh, lines, uh, prior hires and the power line that everybody is getting their power to their hangers?
I don't, you don't like doing that.
Hey, David?
What's the space? 3,000.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Steph.
Hey, um, the property that's south of the airport that's owned by the Port of Sunnyside, uh, we went through quite an effort on that with FAA. It got elevated up to the A D O manager, and it was a pretty hard no, uh, to, for the FAA to entertain, uh, through the fence agreement. Uh, because that, that property was going to be retained by the port, and the port wanted the opportunity to develop, um, that and including a fueling station, which FAA really balked at. So it would be a really tough push, I think, for us at this point to enter into that through the fence agreement.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, you know, when we lay it all out, I think that there, there, that notwithstanding, I think that there may be future paths for opening access to that. We don't necessarily have to solve that in this plan. So. Yeah, that would be difficult, the amount of chemicals that we're going to get in, during summer.
Deliveries.
Deliveries, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, the act, I mean, my priority, if I were to get an access, the surface access, the tenancy, protecting them, that's his priority, right? After that, if you push down to the, toward the northwest corner, possibly, then you run into some property issues, but.
You know, I.
We want to make sure that the existing tenants are displaced, right?
The only thing I think you could use for that green area right now is, like you say, your restrooms and, uh, parking area.
This area here?
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know, it, it's conceivable, it hasn't, we haven't gotten any feedback from the city that the city has any interest in acquiring this for any specific use. But if, if there was interest in acquiring some of the parcel or all of it and focusing it for vehicle parking, restroom facilities, whatever. I, conceivably, it could be done, but it would be a non-aeronomical use. The FAA does, because it's on the opposite side of the road, so not a high priority.
So, like, Red was talking about, you know, the, the depth.
Or the depth.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
You go to, uh, you go to, uh, San Antonio, Seattle, they have pretty large trucks running around with airplanes to bring in the lunch.
Yeah, well, those aircraft are on your port.
That's right.
Can't lock that.
This, this would be.
I mean, the ones that are the baggage support and all the fuel. Yeah, fuel.
Trucks, not a fueler, you need like the truck.
Like the caterers?
Caterers.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
All, I just, I just feel like you're shooting shut the door.
Well, I think, and that's something when we, uh, when there's a final concept, I mean, what, what we can do, and we can talk to Shane and see what the city's comfortable with. We can identify this as a potential, you know, aviation related land, you know, some future.
Future.
undefined future use.
This may require moving things.
And.
This is that you.
Proper, yeah. Yeah, you could acquire right of way, or you could, I mean, any number of possibilities, so. But I think what Stephanie described, James described, sounds pretty consistent, in my experience with the other day and stuff like that. But having said that, I don't see a reason why, I mean, I'll think of the alternative, right? What if the port came back and said, you know what, we've got a really great subdivision plan here, put 35 houses in here. And they go, oh, gee, that's super, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah. Wipe off the airport and, yeah.
All right. So again, when you're thinking about number one, number two, the, the, it's the, the access is maintained, but as you can see, it's presented differently. The north-south access to all the hangers is pretty much the same. What we're doing is just breaking it up.
One thing that, you know, where on the east side of my hanger, is with that one there, I couldn't put a door facing to the north, could I?
Well, um.
The other way I could.
Yeah, that's, well.
No, it's alternative.
Yeah, I think you'd run, I mean, there's, there's nothing, this is paint on the ground here, so I mean, the fact that you.
I know. I, I just.
Taxi through the box.
If I had a door there, yeah, if there's no planes, I'd get a taxi right out.
That is a good observation. That is right. This one doesn't have that.
Well, it seems to be like, you've got to have your work that works. Consolidating back, yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah, I think so. And then, um, and I'll get this PowerPoint, I can email it over to Shane. We can get card copies printed up if you want to do that, but, so you don't have to feel like you have to make a decision. You're starting to get the feedback, right? This is good. Um, so again, the, the trade off, the biggest difference here is we've got this medevac area, which, uh, kind of uses up that, that space in the middle of the main apron and then. The East Apron reconfiguration, um, we end up with, because we're splitting it between the smaller plane tie downs and the dark, the drive through, um, that is, should be a G2. Um, that, you know, you end up with a relatively small, the net effect of this is you end up with about four tie downs. That may not be enough. We've got 16 now that are in plus three, so you have 19 that I've seen one airplane tie down the last several times I've been out there, but I know him, he's just heading that. So think about that too as, as a differentiator, uh, to balance between large and small. I think that the main takeaway is that you can get both, but you're going to have to build more new apron to get them. I mean, if you want to reserve a large number of tie downs and the drive throughs, get by with fewer tie downs, you can come up with a, kind of a hybrid version. Then, uh, now, those, um, those tie downs that are out there now are, are deciding to put aircraft in each direction. Uh, on the.
East Apron?
Yeah. There's actually double what you show there.
Yeah.
There's tie, the tie, so if an airplane facing north, you can put one in.
Right.
They're tail, tail and tailing, so they're facing north and south. So that's how we get originally, it was set up with 18 tie downs. You know, so what you're showing and all, if you're one and two, you're just facing one.
That's because we don't have enough, to the earlier point, we don't have enough, uh, depth. I got, I got a question.
One sec, one sec.
You got it.
Oh, one sec, one sec. Where, where, what was my thought? God, I can't hold too many thoughts going in. So, yeah, the, the reason is that you don't have enough north-south clearance to get a double row. That's the issue, yeah.
Okay. Where your blue line is in that space, then why do you put head and tail line across that?
Where, which blue line now?
Okay, is that blue line there, where it says A, A D G?
Right there.
Okay, whatever you.
Put a row right in the middle?
Put a row right in the middle where you got going head and, head and tail right there, where you, and going that way, go forward or go back.
Yeah, the problem we have with that is, is you see the distance between that orange line and that orange line, right? So we need, if we were to put a row in here.
That, that, see, that, that's the center of the airplane. That would be the center of the airplane.
Yeah, yeah. My, what we, to do that, and I think we looked at it, we can go back and double check it. But I think the problem we run into is, if we have, let's say, instead of two rows of tie downs, right?
Yeah.
We have one center row with north and south facing.
Right.
Okay, two things. One is, when we do that, then we have another FAA clearance we need to meet. Now there's a parallel taxiway center line to a parallel taxi lane center line, and.
Well, can't you just eliminate that taxi center line up there? You're, I don't need.
No, because, uh, well, you're saying, can the air go out, light out onto the taxiway?
Why can't?
Well, possibly. That's a good point. You might be able to convince the FAA of that. They, they generally don't like that, but I think we, you know.
Well, they have, what they have in, uh, Boeing field.
Yeah.
They have the center line, north and south.
Yeah.
Okay. And they have the white line where people pull out of the parking spot and just go to.
Yeah.
The taxiway that other airplane's going down. I have a second blue line.
Yeah, and we've got several airports that have double rows with the north facing position, say, abiding the parallel taxiway. Um, and that, we can look at that. I think then what we would need to do is we need this 80 feet, 79 feet of clear on the south side of that row. So you're running to the fence down here, so that's going to be our pinch point over here. Uh, we can take a look at that. It's possible. We could double it up and just have them shoot straight out without a taxi. Fair point. I think we can look at that. I don't know if we can get our 80 feet on the south side of that double row. That would be what might eliminate some.
Because that, that line is actually the center of the airplane.
It doesn't matter. What we have to do is to consider the tie downs facing the updated design and get that the airplane can vary. And one thing to remember is there's all different sizes of airplanes, right? You can put a big old airplane in there. Uh, but we're using like a 182 as a stand typical single engine.
Yeah, you're using.
A lot of the time, they're more small. Yeah.
Thirty, thirty foot.
Right.
Thirty shape of wood leaf stand.
Okay, well, I can go back, we'll go back and look and see if we can fit a double row in there with a straight shot. And then if we can, I mean, the, the, the first thing we'll double check is if, if we can, we know that the top of the double row, right, could be as far north as here, right then. And then the bottom would be down here somewhere. Then we need to see if we got 80 feet. If we don't have 80 feet to the fence, then we can't do it. That would be the break point on that.
I mean, from the plane to pull out and, and taxi with a 40 foot wing?
Yeah, there's plenty of room, right? Get it in the height. I'm not saying you can't, but you think you have 36 foot wide wing stand, right?
Yeah.
Standards are based on aircraft that's the 49 feet, right? That's at the top end of designer one, so.
Well, you're not going to have.
I know that, but yet they tell us we have to follow their standards, right? Because we don't know what transient aircraft might come in. Some guy in a Malibu could come in from the side of the park.
Park him in the grass.
Well, yeah, you know, that one way. So, I mean, that's a good, that's a good point to leave on that. So it sounds like, what, what is the consensus on? Do you have a gut feeling about how many smaller plane tie downs you really want or need out there?
Well, if you have your one, like, the other picture, order for those people to park. They're going to have to go over where the 172 is right now, 182 is at. Park overnight.
But right now, we've got, we'll scratch the two over here.
Yeah, there's three of them, yeah.
Those three, we're going to not have those. So you've got right now a few options. One has 10 tie downs, small airplane tie downs, these are four. So that's a good place to compare, you know, say, I like this one or I think this one.
Just said people's going to have to turn around and walk out to the cars and that there.
Well, that's kind of why we wanted to get them parking over here, you know, as part of the longer term development is to get access there, a gate with parking. But Red, if you're into a lot of, sorry, that's, I think that one is the last one for the plan. This one here?
Hmm.
Okay. You're going to have to expect number two, where you've got those two sitting in an angle. That's going to happen no matter what. They're just sitting.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, I get that. I mean, that, that's, I think that's what I'm claiming. Okay, I like, and you're right. I mean, people, pilots will do what they'll do. We're not saying, we're not the cops out there. We're just saying, we're laying it out, facing standards.
I'd like to add on to what Red said too. The other thing is, if you get your medevacs, you know, they're still going to come in where right, right north of Bob's hangar. It's convenient for them and, yeah, you know, so that still allows them room to pull in if they need to.
I don't have, I really personally, in my experience, uh, with medevacs in, in around airports is, um, they're not based at your airport, they're in and out quick.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with them camping on the taxiway that much.
But if you have.
The Pilatus that comes in from Skagit a couple of times, three times a month, you don't want them sitting in the middle of your ramp all day long.
Yeah.
That's, that's why you need.
Put them over here, yeah.
I just, your biggest congestion point is the, is the fuel area. And not often, but occasionally, you know, you can get three or four airplanes back.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the biggest. Well, the second one, you remember, we had that little horseshoey thing to come in and out, and we had the box there. I mean, the practical reality is there's nothing you can do with the apron. Seth parked the plane ready for fuel, right?
Right.
There's somebody at the fuel pumps, nobody's getting by until they clear out. The other thing is, we're, we're actually, right, they kind of, in the east, they're going to the west, nose to nose. What is that? What is the end of the props over there? Right by the well, oh, well, right there. That's a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, what, what's that, that asphalt setup so it's nice and smooth?
Yeah, yeah.
I can't, I can't blame them not wanting to drive on it.
Well, I get that, yeah, yeah. And this is very conceptual. I mean, we were just trying to stay clear of the protected areas for the taxi lanes. But it's an access in and get proximity to these areas. Um, there's usually enough room between hangers to park the, and also not to concern about that. Um, and then some parking down over here, so.
And then there, the future you got expansion to the east, which is really.
Exactly. So it sounds like, and that's why, is option one is better than option two. Sounds like cleaner, likes him to that. I'll try to capture that in notes, shoot them back to Shane, and then we can kind of. So option three kind of gets us into the future future, which is sort of compatible with option one, right? And it basically takes. Everything over here is, everything over here is the same as option one, right?
Yeah.
Reconfigured, smaller plane tie downs, access, hangar, blah, all this stuff. Over here, drive throughs. Now, that's where this new stuff can sort of take hold, and that is, um, you know, these are the drive through positions. We've got here a couple of T-hanger sites, uh, with box hangers along the south side. We've got the access along this perimeter, FBO type facilities here, fuel storage with a fueling area that's clear of the taxi lane. So this is.
That's pretty sweet.
Long term, but it, it's all contained in the southeast corner that the city currently owns. Um, we, you know, we've got a little bit of dead space out here. We kind of carved it up just, right now, just to kind of keep it minimal. Um, and this is the, kind of, a dedicated helicopter parking area. Again, you know, it could be tie downs all along through here, could be, you know, that, helicopter stand. It's where that engine's to get to it. I haven't go all the way around it over here. Yeah, over, flip it towards the left, somewhere over this way. Over here, you mean?
He's talking about way over here.
Way over here.
G1.
And that's where you're driving.
So do you give me some direction over here somewhere farther?
Ee, east of the, east of the well.
East to the well.
Somewhere.
Over in this area.
Yeah, okay. So maybe up in here or something, or back in here, you think it wouldn't be too hard for them to get in? I guess if we.
Or there. They're going to drive, they'll have to drive to be pulled.
I wasn't thinking of the air, this is much of that helicopter. I've seen, I've had tough team behind hangers and airports and stuff. Kind of depends on, on how clear it is. And I've seen them down taxi lanes and, and roads and.
Could you put it, put it right above where it says fuel area, right in that area, then they just go right out that road?
Way over here? Yeah, you could, you could. You've got some clearance over there, although you're running into your old area for your.
The other problem they have is when they come in, and I've seen them do it several times, though, they air taxi. And if there's a plane sitting there, a tie down area, absolutely, things move pretty good.
Well, that's what we're trying to avoid, is that's why we don't put tie downs right on top of there and it's clearances is not maybe super, super good. It's, um.
And then you got the animals driving, driving all the way.
Yeah, yeah. So that's one of the reasons, sort of, embed the helicopter landing pad in the.
Oh, the only, I, I think it was Red, right next to the, uh, pump, that first block right there for the helicopter.
Well, if, if we can, I mean, the corner, we're going to, if somebody's parked in this tie down and the helicopter swoops in, then.
Well, we're just saying it was over there, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, here we go.
There would be fence there.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely could look at that. I think we can certainly swap out this hangar and, uh, have a, kind of a dedicated parking area for helicopters and still.
Because you got a road there for the animals to get in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We got, I think like that, those two, here is where the Pilatuses are, that. That'd all be medevac areas. Well, no, I think in this option, it's going to be your general issue for all your transient aircraft in designer twos. Medevac included, but.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you can make those two slots for medevac or helicopter.
Yeah, I think you could.
Whoever can land there first.
You could do, another thing you could do is you could, um, you could love, yeah, helicopter, have medevac one. You know, we could make this a dual use kind of thing. And, you know, if there's an airplane in there, then the helicopter may not have a place to go. But ideally, if, if, if there's two spots and there's a, you know, they're both open and it's an airplane, and one has an H and one doesn't, you're going to put the, the airplane, the fixed wing, and then parking and keep the helicopter spot open. Uh, but, you know, um, there's some flexibility with that too. You could keep, rather than tucking the helicopter parking back here, you could keep it right here. Kind of like, or here, you got the issue with clearance on the.
Well, you, you're better for being the one on the north side, so they can come in and lower down.
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of why we kept this one to the north up there, same issue.
If you put that, where I was talking about the helicopter pad, do those lights have to come down this north of the well, over here?
Yeah, there's. Um, in terms of overhead plugs?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, the, the issue would be if we were to cite a helicopter, any helicopter parking position, um, it's gonna have the same clearance requirements as the taxi lane or FA. Not a, it's not, FA doesn't treat it like a landing area, so we don't have an approach path that we have to clear. It's a hover taxi or a wheel taxi route. So anything that would, you know, this, this, and designer two, which is what this is, this one fifteen through here, that would be enough for most medevac helicopters getting them out. Um, but, you know, we'd have to look, the reason I say that is because they migrate over there. Uh, which has got that light over there in the corner or somewhere of, of, uh, box hangar, or to come down closer to these, but uh. Yeah. Yeah, I think we'd have to take a look at that. And our Asia survey will pick up the high some of those things. If we've got anything that, uh, was gonna penetrate a taxi hover or wheel taxi path, we'll have to decide that and possibly relocate. Um, so this is kind of the one that, you know, I think, go back to the beginning and we're thinking we want to preserve access to existing hangers. We want to protect existing fuel because it's not clear that we want to let tanks try to pick it up and move it. So that's good short-term, near-term kind of thing. Uh, this is more of the long-term vision. And again, this would be the sort of thing that you would sort of nibble away at in little bits and bites here. And it probably would start with the reconstruction of the apron and this construction of new parking, uh, for these drive-through guys. So essentially, you could start, say, as one of this could just be a modified east apron. And you could pop this taxi lane down to get humidity and then open up.
And keep in mind too, everybody here, that that's all subject to FA approval and funding.
Yeah.
And all that type of stuff.
Funding is the big part. We're talking a big, big chunk of money here. And, you know, the reality is this is more demand in terms of hangar spaces. Sixteen aircraft here, you've got all these individuals that could have one or more aircraft. That's way more demand than we're forecasting over the next twenty years. So, um, mostly we do this just to say, you know, yeah, you've got a lot of room. We're not saying you're gonna go out and build it all now or even in the next twenty years. Most important thing is to, is to have a concept or a plan that you like. You want to protect the ability to cite T-hangers or an FBO or a fuel or anything. You don't let somebody go out there and build something in the wrong place. And then say, oh, now we can't, we've done our thought. So it doesn't matter to me, I mean, this could be forty years down the road. I won't be around and see it, but, you know, if it, if it makes sense, and that's what you guys mean, is this stuff doesn't make sense, it doesn't matter what, what it looks like.
Shane, about east ramp, what do you suspect that might cost to re-assold?
Um, I think, I definitely had, had to hang up. She could tell us right off the top of her head, but, um, I don't remember what it was. Was it cheap?
I don't know. It's probably.
They probably don't give that stuff.
What's that?
They probably don't give that stuff away, no, huh?
No.
How deep does it have to be?
Four inches, is that?
Yeah, I think the issue there is kind of like what you found on the, on the runway years ago. And the cracking one that's very similar, that's on your old parallel taxi where the runway. And isn't as much an issue with the thickness of the pavement, the surface and days, the soil and the compaction. Um, so I don't know, it's definitely beyond that, but essentially, we're assuming, I mean, we'll, you know, we'll play it out. I mean, cost-wise, uh, HLA is gonna do a cost assessment on that. But essentially, we're assuming that it's a full reconstruct.
Yeah, cause you got, you got to now then.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the footprint of the actual.
Yeah.
And I, when I say full reconstruct, I mean grind off the top surface, gonna have to re-compass the base and such. I don't think it's gonna be thicker pavement, but the cracks from that, you know, it's not that you can stick your foot in. And when we see cracks that big, that usually means that, um, the underlying structure is the.
Yeah.
So I don't change the engineer. Um, so that's a big project, but the time to tackle a big add is to incorporate it into the design. See if you get the benefit of, if you get the funding and city has the match, remember there's a ten percent match. So a two million dollar potential project is, is twenty thousand dollars out of pocket. You know, a hundred thousand, I mean, that, a washout will help with, typically they'll help cut the match. So that, that's, but it's still a lot of money. And, uh, you know, the tie-down revenues aren't really gonna lie to recruit that anytime. That going was money-making schemes, you know? So, uh, but this pavement is going south in hurry and it's not gonna get that, um, hard work. Um, so, okay, I think.
How many more slides do you have, David?
I think that's it. I just moved it down here. Oh, wait, five, uh, there was, um.
What was it, three A?
Three, you know, three A. Okay, so this is three A, very, very similar. We, I think, I sure remember why we came up with the three A. And I think what it was is we were not happy having a chunk of open space on this. So what we did here was we kind of fudged it and we, we pushed the, the, pushed the, uh, larger plane drysters over the middle. We squeezed out a few more tie-downs here, ten there, same as that. And this is all the same, all the same is all the same. We were just basically able to kind of do one, two, three, four, so. Not, not a big deal. It's just, it's a lot of pavement. A lot of pavement, and probably more than we need, but that's what that would look like. And I think this is kind of the differentiation. It's basically a modified alternative one. So if you're looking at one, two, or three, this is just basically taking one and then expanding it to the east. So, um, kind of gets the sense of the topic. And it must have actually trained group two the helicopter.
Well, you mean, how close can you talk to helicopter two to group two?
Yeah, your helicopter, your bad, that's. Yeah, we need, um, the taxi lane object free area for design group two is, we just changed the standard, but it's about one hundred and fifteen feet. I think they rounded it to the one, or I think they might have just changed it to one-eight-one or something. So it's basically fifty-seven and a half feet from center line to the edge of the parked area, parked aircraft. Uh, so half of the one-fifteen, the one-eighteen, other than the new number is.
Two, three, four.
Um, so that would allow a helicopter to park inside the box. So if you imagine painting the box on there, the clearances here, these are all design group two clearances. Um, so that's gonna be half of that one-fifteen. Same thing with the parked aircraft, the fueling area. The idea there is to get the entire aircraft clear of the taxi lane, object area. And, um, so, yeah, it's one-fifteen split, twenty-three. So this was just the summary of this. And like I said, I'll email this to Shane, go back to the office. So where we are is we want to get some input. We've got some big feedback tonight. I'll, uh, write it up in a note, shoot it over to Shane for his review. Um, and then I think what we're wanting to do is, um, um, you know, get some consensus. I mean, I think, I don't know, Shane, tell me, what, what is it you want from this review?
Well, I think that, I, this has all been great. And I think, and, so let me clarify real quick, and this is a question to you, David. So for the, for the ALP, the new one, having these alternatives in here, we could have all that included in the update, correct?
In the, it'll be in your report.
Okay, but not necessarily in the plan itself.
Well, I think, yeah, what you want to end up with is on your airport layout plan, uh, you're gonna have, gonna have one, one of, I mean, you're gonna have one proposed configuration for the main apron, reconfiguration. And one proposed configuration for your east apron, which is all existing, being reconfigured.
Right.
And then anything new. So it's hard to put multiple options on the same line.
Right.
So kind of think about it in terms of, you know, a lot of this shares common pieces like that taxiway that drops down east of the east apron, drops down, serves the hangar, UAB hangar. That, that's something that, you know, you can, you can modify the hangar types and sizes all you want.
I guess I was looking at it more as, because I, I see alternate one and two as being kind of current. But we have the, well, we can work with kind of in the immediate future.
Right, right, right.
And I see three and four, or three and three A, as being more long-term, like you were saying, twenty, thirty years out. So my question is.
It's a good way to look at it.
Will all of those be included in the plan?
I would say, yeah, let's look at it this way. So let's say you like alternative one, okay? So all of this stuff gets dropped on to your existing facilities, right? Your existing runway taxiway system aprons, all drawn as existing, right? And then the, the reconfigured taxi, so the nice thing about, in terms of depicting that, we're not talking, uh, here, uh, or here, in this area, this is all existing pavement. So the drawing has a line basically, kind of like where the edge of the apron is, edge of taxi lanes, all that stuff.
Oh, a little blue plane you got already written on there, over there in the parking area? That's where the airplanes would have to be moved down to, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be a reconfiguration of your current apron, so.
Okay, where you got those little airplanes.
Yeah, those, those are the tie-downs, right? So that's that. And with the idea, we'll go back, take a look at that idea, the double row in the middle. But that potentially would be a reconfiguration. So along those lines, Shane, your, whatever ends up in the preferred layout for the east apron is what we're gonna want to show on, so you're gonna have your existing tie-downs fatally depicted in black, right?
Right.
And then we're gonna show the new tie-down configuration like in red or something on top. So it's clear, when you're looking at the drawing, that those are the old tie-downs, these are the new tie-downs. Um, and then the setbacks will be depicted. And, and I think the, you know, the old stripe that runs through the apron again, that gets replaced with the new stripe outlining your fueling area, which is already there. It's just identifying that. Um, I think getting, kind of getting all the existing things sort of dialed in the way you think best they're gonna work, then everything else can get dropped in. And I think what you want to do then is, uh, when you're working away, um, you work your way to the east, that everything up to here, right up to this east taxi lane is all pretty much variations of existing.
Right.
And then, you know, and you're gonna, whatever direction the city wants to go, you're gonna want to figure out a way to accommodate those designer two aircraft. So, you know, that, that's kind of a near-term need, uh, other than the fact that if you don't have them, those are supposed to be here somewhere. Um, but the other stuff out here, now, there's, there's a couple of different ways we can do this too. Uh, it would be easy for us to draw in the, you know, the future taxi lane, like an L, your backwards L. This is that, and I don't know how far this is along. This is the location that that board from Cityside Flight Plan shows.
Yep.
For that UAB hangar. Assuming that that's a done deal, uh, you, you know, this taxiway access would make sense. As, as something to depict, right? Because you're, assuming they need taxiway access. Um, if you stopped and, and you had to build out for your helicopter and your whatever, kind of consolidated everything in here, kind of get that pretty well defined, you could leave all this area as development reserve, less defined, so you have more flexibility going forward. Um, that's acceptable also. Um, and we can show all of this in a, like, in a different shade. We could say, hey, all this green out here, development reserve, contest, it doesn't admit you to anything, but none of that would show up in your twenty-year template program.
Right, yeah. That, that eighth airplane T-hanger, can you tell me how long that thing is?
That is, uh, oh gosh, um, I wanna say it is around one hundred and ninety feet. The gate door is about forty, one and a half wide on average.
Four, 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 four.
Cause the corner, and it was mostly the.
It's just, again, we have. Shane's like, right now, I'm gonna report it the same.
Yeah, and I think one thing about that too is that, you know, if we, if the main, the spine of this area is this access taxi lane, right? Like, we've got the first piece of it here. I really like the fact that we don't have to abandon that. We can make use of that. It serves the east apron. We can access these drive-throughs into that. Um, but, you know, if you have that laid out, even if you look at a helicopter parking area over here, you've still got hangar development area over here and down along here without doing anything else, right? I mean, taxi lane wise. Um, then if somebody says, you know what, we need our T-hanger here, then all you really have to do is build a stub taxi lane on either side of, of one of these hangers. You don't even have to do the underarms, the studs. And then you could have two stubs going in, suddenly you'd have access to the hangar. Or a four unit hangar or whatever, you know, whatever somebody wanted to put in there.
Yeah.
Um, and I think it gives you a lot of flexibility. And I think really, this isn't something the FA is gonna fund this. Or the city, the city has access to cash.
Yeah, if you wanted an FBO, wouldn't it be better to put it in that north blue box right there? Right next to the pump right there? If you wanted an FBO, so people would get in there, they're not driving all the way over, over there.
I think that's, that's definitely a possibility. I think, um, yeah, that would be a central location. And of course, you do, you put the FBO there, the helicopter might just go somewhere else. But, yeah, you definitely could do that. The, the, the challenge we have is that, and not to say you couldn't, like, flip this thing. You could say, well, instead of putting the T-hangers here, why don't we flip them and put them over here? We start running into the corner. We could put the fueling in the area you want to buy the FBO.
Cause you have to have more wingtip corners.
Yeah, yeah.
For future.
Yeah, it really gets spread out.
So we'll bring the seven oh seven around and then we'll come.
We stopped thinking beyond, I mean, so, anyway.
But I understand. Yeah. When you submit this, you have to have multiple ideas. I mean, well, they gave you, okay, well, we like this part of one.
They, they.
Okay. And then they, oh, wait a minute, we like this part of two, so let's put this, I mean, did they start making the decisions for you?
No.
Is that work?
No, no, definitely not. City's call. So if you, if you submit that first plan, I think, I think that's the first thing.
Uh, yeah.
Alternate one?
Yeah, so everything from here, here, there is one.
Yeah.
Um, the way it works is we will, so far, we've done a lot of looking at pictures, right? And sketching out things. So these graphics and the runway graphics that we presented last time, those will be presented as figures in a chapter, all right? So the alternatives chapter will have all the graphics and some text that will add to explain each of the alternatives. So we've got all of these and we've got the runway options. Um, it's drafts and it's for FA review. FA will look at consistency and they've given us some feedback informally, like on the runway options, and we know what they don't like. Um, but the process is that what I would like to do is when we present the draft report, the draft chapter, I would like there to be a preliminary prefer alternative. That's gonna come from the city. Like, upon further consideration, we like, and it can be a hybrid. You can take, I like this piece of option number one, this piece of option. And there's gonna be some, uh, once we get some general direction, then we'll fine-tune it into a prefer alternative figure. That'll be, we'll figure out whether we put it at the beginning of the chapter or at the end, because sometimes if you put it way back at the end, it's a lose side of it. It's way through forty alternatives to get to the one. We might do it more like an executive summary. And what it really is saying to the FA is, we came up with preliminary options, met with the local advisory group and staffed the city, and got a lot of feedback, and we kind of fine-tuned it, and here's our, our preliminary recommended option. Now, we're not gonna do that until we get some sense that the city, that's the direction city wants to go, right? We're not here to say, hey, it's our way of hiring, right? I mean, if the city doesn't want to show something specific, like, we don't think we need to show, you know, an FBO space or a T-hanger or whatever. I mean, that's the kind of feedback they get from the cities. Um, most airport owners want to show as much variety as they can, because we really don't know what's coming down, around the corner. And the worst place to be as an airport owner is if somebody knocks and goes, says, I want to put a T-hanger up. You're sitting there going, I don't have a spot on my ALC for that, right? Okay, and we as planners would have failed. Cause I think we know T-hangers are popular, common. They're cheaper to build per square foot than conventional, uh, in general, I think, for revenue side. Um, but anyway, that's, so that process, Red, is that once all that happens, the chap, we'll run the chapter by, uh, you guys and the city. Get, get any review comments, and then it'll go to the FA. When Agnes at the FA opens it up, she's gonna see what the recommendation is. That is where we want her to focus her review. That is where we want her to focus her review. It'll kind of be interesting to see. I mean, essentially, what the FAA will say at every airport, they're not gonna tell the airport owner what they need to do. It's your airport. The only thing the FAA cares about is, is everything that's laid out, doesn't meet standards, right? That's what they're all about. Because they don't wanna fund anything that doesn't meet standards. And they may think that, you know, development is, you know, more than is justified based on forecast estimates, right? Like, well, your forecast says you're gonna have an increase of like five aircrafts in a month, or ten aircrafts. Why do you have thirty one? Well, we're protecting for the future. So then we just simply say, well, you know, that's all in for development. So that's the process. And our expectation is that the FAA will say, yeah, that looks right, you, you know, they're gonna check the box, okay? And, and, and they don't approve their preferred alternatives? No. They don't, you know, as remember from our earlier conversation, the FAA only has two official approval milestones in master plan and airport layout plans. One is they approve the forecasts, which they have done, and two, they approve they sign the airport layout. That is, effectively, that's the contract between the city and the FAA. Doesn't mean the FAA has guaranteed funding, but it means that what's shown on the plan meets your standards and would be eligible, except for certain things like fuel tanks might not be. Or private revenue generating facilities would not be typically. So that's kind of a long way to get around that. I know we're running long here, but I meant also to, was there another question?
Yeah, I got a question. So what, so what do you need from us tonight, David? Do you want, or do you want us just to kind of mull over this?
Yeah, I can send, I can shoot this over to you, so you have the power point, and then you can just figure it out.
Okay.
I, I think some feedback, I, I think why don't we take two weeks or so?
Okay.
And just give it a thought, and, and kind of, I, I think what I heard tonight is some consensus toward the option one versus two. And that, that's the, this guy, basically, over here. And it sounded like there's still a fairly strong desire to keep more tie-downs rather than less tie-downs. I mean, that seems right. We're gonna have the question about whether we can have a single row jump straight out or, or not, and I'll look into that. We'll look at what we can do. If we clear the taxi lane, I'm willing to play it out there. Just in all, all candor, that's something the FAA may slap us down on if we play it out there. But I don't care, I don't mind people know. If we, if we wanna lay it out that way, it's kind of an arcane thing, it probably goes unnoticed by the FAA nine times out of ten. But they might, that one time, say, hey, we don't really want that. We had it in Afraid Up, we had, we were flown into Afraid Up, we did the master plan there, they have this massive apron. And it directly abuts the wider runway, which is great, because the wider runway is just painted on the apron, right? And the FAA said, well, our standards say you have to break the apron in the runway. Like, there's no way we can do that. No way we can do that. It took us year and a half to convince the FAA that that wasn't the way to go. Mostly because when you pull the wider off the runway, you know, you can't pull them through a ditch, right? You need that, that clear area. So, the FAA will throw stuff out, and it's not over. So, so I think, Shane, if we had, get this over to you, and then if we can circulate it out.
Absolutely.
If we can kind of, whatever, I know we're running into holidays and stuff, but if we could kind of close the loop, and I'll have Samantha send out an email on this, too, maybe she's, she's gonna be able to be on the road tomorrow, too. But I'll, I think what we'll do is, we'll just open up a review period, we'll attach the alternatives PDFs, and then get some feedback on that. And I think, Shane, you may be able to glean from the audience I can get from the group, which way you're leaning. If, if you see a clear path, and say, yeah, the city likes, you know, one plus two. One without three, or whatever, then I think you can do that. The other, the other part is, this is something we had last time, when we looked at the runway options. So, we, the, the other piece of this is, we have five runway options. Two of the five do not impact Ray Road. Meaning the runway protection zone, the trapazoid, stays clear of Ray Road. It always impacts on seven N, there's no, I mean, we have one option where we can get this runway protection zone clear of highway two forty-one, but it pushes us way over here. The feedback that we've received informally is, the options that push heavy in this direction are probably non-starts.
What did you say? I didn't hear that.
Non-starts, no, no, no. There's not a lot of appetite for pushing the airport to the east.
All right, the green area is what you're talking about, right?
Well, I'm talking about how we position.
I know, but.
Ray Run Leader.
Yeah. How close can we get that green thing to go that way?
Well, right now.
Not moving to this end, but going that way, just going that way.
Well, the green area is the property of the port.
Right.
Some problem, with the green area is, what we're showing that is, is acquisition.
Okay.
So the recommendation is, if this was the preferred option, the city would acquire this parcel right here, right? And the runway is right where it sits now, and this runway protection zone sits nicely inside that parcel.
Okay, but now, we're over, we're flying over two forty-one.
Yeah, now, we've got another option that shifts the runway.
No, no, I, leave that alone. Why can't we have an option to fly over Ray Road?
Well, we could, we could.
I mean, I'd leave, leave this one alone.
Well, it's two, I think two is.
All right, here, let me just run through, look at the visuals now. Kind of your existing runway.
Yeah.
Option one, alternate one. Second one, we shift to the east. Now, I know you don't wanna.
Okay, now you shift it, but take, take that part right there and go back to it.
Yeah, I know, FAA is gonna say, if you want us to say that the runway widening and the shift were probably.
Not, not widening, we don't.
Well, we have to widen to seventy-five feet.
Eighty G.
What, is it seventy-five feet now?
It's sixty now.
Sixty.
It's sixty now, it used to be seventy-five for designer two. So there are all these options, you have a wider runway, wider safety, the safety area has to be graded out. There's a lot of really.
Why, oh, my ask, you know, we can keep the runway, but we don't have to widen it. Why do we have, why do we have to widen it?
Because our design aircraft is the Air Tractor eight oh two and other designer two aircraft, not just runway.
Highlighted, highlight this.
Yeah, so the Vlada, the Air Tractor eight oh two.
Yeah, but Vlada's already coming in here.
I understand, and that's, it's the reason, and the Air Tractor, we've got enough takeoff surroundings, by our count, that pushes the airport into a different design category. That's why these designer two standards are in effect now, where they weren't before. So we kind of knew that was coming, but that's, and one of the other, I mean, these are runway protection zones, these are R P Cs, they get bigger with the larger aircrafts, so, not necessarily longer, but they get wider, and they require, you know, allegation easements when they go off airport property. So this one, I know that the perfect world scenario is you keep every bit of pavement you have.
Right.
And you push it to the east, right? I'm just telling you, the FAA is gonna be like, yeah, we're not pushing it that way. So this one's even better, you get more runway at the east, you keep all that over here, right? But five hundred and twenty-nine feet east, but the way this is shown, you keep the current thirty-four twenty-five. And the FAA standard would say, get rid of this pavement. Now, you clear your two forty-one, you know, when you're swooping in over two forty-one, you're getting a lot of clearance. Now, this problem with this third option is, we're now pushing into Ray Road. This is kind of where I was talking about. And the FAA has a whole set of land use compatibility criteria that they would apply. One thing they don't like are houses in runway protection zones. They don't like roads that are added, right? So, so, kind of, you get the idea, you go from the easiest one to the hardest one, so I back it up again. So, my crowd, I wish I could do this statement, which one? Not dead, it's five hundred feet to the east end.
Fifty, that would be three or four.
This one, yeah. Four, and we're shifting five twenty-nine to the east, so this is option three. So, you know, in theory, if you kept that area in red over here, you'd be at about thirty-nine hundred feet, but I.
Yeah, that would be ideal.
Yeah, that may be ideal, but I don't think the FAA is that quiet.
Will the FAA let you leave that and use it as a, as a light?
No, not a display threshold.
How about, how about number two?
I'm gonna try and let you get. Well, each, let me just say, each of the run, each of these options, all five, they all keep the blue. The blue is always thirty-four twenty-five. That's the length we could justify with the FAA.
So we'll send all this stuff to you guys to look at, too, this'll all be part of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Play.
So, let me just. So, one, two. One, the existing, we just basically, we're widening in place, engrading out, safety area on both ends, standards, everything, each standard, taxiway separation, standards, all good. Two, we shift the runway a hundred seventy-two feet east on the east end, on the west end. We added up to compensate on the east, so there's no loss of runway length. You get better clearance on the two forty-one side, you keep the R P C clear of Ray Road. This is a, in my view, if I had to choose between one and two, I think two is better, because you're improving your runway two forty-one clear.
So you keep that small spot?
Well, you can try, but, you know, if you can't, then it goes away. Yeah, I think the FAA would stop.
That extra.
The FAA is kind of wise to the fact that it's policy pavement, they think it's runway they can use, whether it's a runway, or a stopway, or whatever, you know? Because they, they don't really want that kind of like weather.
Well, let's say, you made that the, like, on, on red section. That extra hundred and some odd feet right there.
Yeah.
On number two here.
Yeah.
Would give him very chance for takeoff.
I get it, and I don't even disagree. If I was flying a three ten out here, and I lost an engine on takeoff, I'd want more runway, too, right? But that's not the way the FAA thinks, believe it or not. I guess the way to think about the difference between one and two is, if, if the, um, I was gonna say that, I mean, they both end up with the same runway.
They already, they already took four hundred feet away from the, from the end, but.
Yeah, so this, I mean, the way to look at this is, how important is it to you to get a clear twenty-one on seven? And I think it's kind of important, but, you know, that's kind of a, there's no.
Well, that stopping distance in the winter time.
Well, I know.
That's a couple hundred feet right there.
Yeah.
That would help out a lot.
We just left it alone.
Yeah.
At least leave, leave that runway alone. Just, what are you dealing with with that, Wes? But, yeah, I would say, yeah, I mean, you gotta.
You gotta widen though, right?
Yeah, widen, shift down on the east end, too. What I would say, though, is, when you do the design for the project, and you're going out and starting to.
Change the whole runway up.
I would just say, you know, it's a Stephanie question, it's like, okay, Stephanie, figure out how we keep this pavement in place, okay? And then maybe it's just marked as a stopway.
Kind of a process.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's not gonna be anything the FAA is gonna blanket approval now. I guarantee you, if we have the FAA to approve this as a, as a paved over run, or stopway.
And they would wanna say, increase the width of the runway.
Well, the width is the non, non-negotiable, as far as the, you know, eventually.
Well, you're gonna be able to fade, you still have to enlarge your runway.
Say that again.
If you're even like this, we, do we still have to enlarge your runway?
No, eventually.
The width, the width of it.
Long term, I mean, the way I would look at it is, the runway's in good shape, right? And still, the, the timing for the widening, my guess is, what's, what's gonna happen is, it's gonna be timed out when the runway next needs some major rehabilitation, right? It's a big job. So it's gonna have to be done, you know, in some form or fashion. That's typically where we see those projects come in. It's like, if the pavement is shot today, then we say, yeah, probably it's gonna be on your next project. But because that pavement is in pretty good shape, I don't see a huge pressure from the FAA to widen it, like, in your next five years. You can justify widening it today, based on your traffic. But we also know we've got a priority project here with new statement pavement, worse, far worse shape. And operationally, you know, I don't know, you guys know, but I mean, operating on sixty feet, that much difference from seventy-five, doesn't make much of a difference, you know?
Yeah, aren't, so would you widen, if you're gonna widen it to the north, or to the south?
Well, no, I think our, Stephanie confirmed last time that the design of the runway is a common ground section. So the center line's the high point, so we're gonna add seventy, well, the fifteen feet, seven and a half feet on each side. But we also have to grade anyway, because the runway safety area for designer two is a hundred and fifty feet wide, seven hundred and twenty. So instead of sixty outside, we've got a got seventy-five, and everything's gotta be graded out. The connectors on, on the taxiway, I think when they were designed, I know they used, like, the open, the designer two on these connectors, so I think the geometry is good. Some of the grades, the reception of the lateral safety area, there's gonna need to be some new fill-in designs on the south sides here where they connect.
Or would it just add S, if you wanted to make it wider runway? Why don't you just go north with the F to Y?
You could, but then you'd have.
Then you would have to change your taxiway.
Well, we're not gonna have to do anything with the taxiway. Alpha is fine, because the separation between the runway center line as it is today, and the center line of Alpha, it immediately currently meets designer two standards, so we don't have to mess with the taxiway.
You can change that ground.
Yeah, if you wanna, if you wanna shift, and we've done that, if you want, sometimes you really get squeezed. You have to rebuild the whole runway, because that ground has to be shifted. It's a lot more expensive, a lot more costly. So that's kind of the thing, and that, so what I would say is, from a practical standpoint, option one and two are virtually the same, except for this shift. And I would say, try to separate the idea in your mind that the only reason option two is good is if we could keep this, because there's a possibility that you can't. So then the question is, is it worth it? It really comes down to the clearance on this road. We can get a, so the part seven, the airspace approach, right? So as a visual runway, the, for the current runway end now, we can't clear a twenty-to-one slope on the highway. Because the, what happens is, not, the runway protection zone is not part seventy-seven, but it's kind of like it. Standard is, the approach slope on the runway end starts two hundred feet beyond the end of the runway, right? There's an op, there's the primary surface, which is that flat plain university, kind of a rectangle along the runway, five hundred feet wide, centered on the runway, and it runs basically end to end, so the corners are closed. So what we have now is, vehicles traveling on this highway will penetrate the twenty-to-one approach surface. What we have currently is, there's a design workaround for that, the FAA allows, and it's called hierarchical clearance surface, or threshold siding surface. That's also a twenty-to-one slope. That allows for this class of runway, daytime, not time, we have visual, we can begin the twenty-to-one slope at the, at the runway end, not two hundred feet off. That extra two hundred feet gives us just enough clearance to clear a seventeen-foot, or a fifteen-foot vehicle on a public roadway.
Would this also impact the idea of putting in some kind of a mission approach? GPS approach?
It, it, not the way we're thinking about it. No, that's a good point, we, the, the, a couple factors. Based on the large airplane category of this airport, meaning above twelve-five, we can get an instrument approach to the airport itself, like a GPS A, right? Just comes in from someplace, direction, and it's gonna, while it could line up, I've seen them designed equally well lined up with the runway, coincidentally. But if you look at, I don't have any answer about it, but if you look at the approach plates, you know, you're gonna have S, whatever, straight in, like, S twenty-five, or circling. Well, cir, well, circling is what a, what, what the airport approach is. Whether it's lined up with the runway or not, it's gonna be circling, and that allows the pilot then to hit the missed approach point, see the airport environment, then pick the runway and then land. That one works well for a couple reasons. The minimums are not typically that much higher, especially in an area like this, than a straight-in approach. But the nicest thing about it is that it allows us to keep twenty-to-one approach surfaces to the runway. We go to the straight-in approach, GPS straight-in approach, maybe two-five, or seven. For this category of airport, we have to clear a thirty-four-to-one approach slope, which is flatter. I mean, twenty feet out for one foot of gain, right? Versus thirty-four feet out for one foot of gain, so it's much flatter, and I'm not sure we can clear it. I mean, we can't clear the, the road now, and the FAA would be disinclined to approve an approach that has penetration on the inner approach.
Well, I think there's some geography elevation issues to each.
Well, I think the design, what'll happen in the design, and where the airport layout plan will sort of pass this off, is, we can identify, and we have in the facility department, the infrastructure management footage, and the air.
the infrastructure management, and the airspace can be planned around that. So I think that's a decision for the city. We can push either direction, but it seems to us that a circling approach is gonna work better for this airfield because of the clearances and the approach slopes. So if that, unless the city has a strong opinion on each other, that's what we would recommend because it'll allow us to keep this 20 to one approach. Regardless of how the runway is shifted east or west, then we'll still be able to 20 to one slopes. And like I said, the final design and the procedure is gonna be an FAA flight procedures exercise. And their inbound approach paths and their missed approach procedure paths and their instrument departure paths are all gonna be defined on terrain and... But we just went through an exercise over Equilia at Forks and with the FAA flight procedures guys, and they're running into sanctuary federally protected airspace, can't fly below 200 feet, running in the mountains of the Olympic Peninsula, and they found one path that it can get in and do a circling procedure to the airport. There's no option there now. And that, that's the kind of thing the FAA would do. So I think the master plan, airport layout plan approach is it would be identified as a priority, and I think the medevac operators would say yes, transient pilatus guys would say yes, because I know I'm talking to the pilot that flies from Burlington. There have been a few rare, a few occasions where they have been able to come in because they're the act of on drive, or they've canceled the trip. Medevac, that could be an issue too, but none of that is incompatible for what we're talking about. And the only change, the only change that would be made on that actually would even affect your runway margins, because if you have a circling approach, the runway end margins would still be visual as opposed to the... So, yeah, I think when you're looking back through these guys, then keep in mind, really focus on the west and the east end, and just recognize that, you know, I would say, you can always try to get the FAA to allow you to keep some old pavement and that, but it's gonna be a really, really tough fight. The FAA pretty much told us with our grand scheme here with display thresholds, kind of love the idea that we get 4100 feet runway, but they're like, yeah, we don't like display thresholds, so it's... So unless we could come up with a really good reason to do it, we're like, yeah, we don't really like that. This one is kind of the worst of the lot when it comes to the impact that we use. So I tried that one the other day, that I had to hit the edge. It's, you gotta, it's hard. If you hit the edge of the... If you went by, if you hit it 500 feet to the east, I came over those houses.
Oh, right.
I ran up to get over the power line.
Yeah.
So that's a hundred.
Yeah.
Approach. Yeah. That's what they heard from the numbers.
The 20 to one?
Yeah. Where do you put the edge of the...
The Part 7.7 20 to one is measured 200 feet from the end, so you go out flat elevation and up. But that's just a 20 to one. If you were to do a, like a, you know, like a pathy glide path, like a three degree pathy, that's basically gonna design the path pushing near the numbers and the touchdown zone. Yeah, this is uncomfortable. I mean, to me, I would be less comfortable with pushing out here, and there's a whole host of problems out here. It's like a horn, it's... And, but, you know, even the options three and four, which aren't quite as crazy, still run into problems. So option four, this is where we said, well, gee, if you could, if the city could acquire all this property and vacate Ray Road, realign access somehow on county road, then, you know, what do you end up with? And, you know, and really, this was kind of the wildest scenario, because what this one could do in theory is it could give you a fully compliant runway with runway protection zones, both ends with no rubs in them.
Oh, you know, they had that Jackman Airport, they moved that road quarter mile out and around.
Yeah.
Oh, we just moved 241 out around...
Yeah, that's exactly... Well, they were kind of told, don't, don't try to think about moving... Whether they were doing the canal or any of that stuff, so we gotta lift that type of thing, you know?
Oh, we're gonna do it. I don't know.
Yeah, well, yeah. Right. Almost okay. Ground level on the table, the water table might be... They have to go down several hundred feet of water. So I will, let's wrap it up, I guess. See if you can get home and have some dinner maybe. So I'll shoot you or Samantha will shoot an email. We'll give you a copy of this.
Sounds good.
There's a lot of extras. If we give it the whole PowerPoint, there's a lot of stuff in there that you've seen in previous meetings.
Right.
Focus on that, and I think we'll, we'll try to outline the process where we can get some input in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll contour with Shane and his crew, and hopefully we'll have the makings of a preferred alternative.
Yep.
Good. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could you email it?
Yep.